Welcome all. This is very exciting. Welcome to the special meeting Tuesday, March 25th, joint between the Historic Preservation Commission and the City Hall. And Mr. Montgomery, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Or do I do a roll call first?
Let's do a roll call of the City Council.
Absolutely.
Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember May.
Here.
And Councilmember Rule is currently absent.
Thank you very much.
Everyone, please rise as you are able. Flag is at the rear of the room here. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And may I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And one small housekeeping piece, this would be for the council. In the hopes of getting through our three agenda items from the HPC, the request has been that we set the timer when we get into the discussion for three minutes. If anybody doesn't object to that? Agreement on that? Is that okay? Okay, wonderful. That's what we'll do. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. And I have one public comment card, and that is from Jan Lambert. John Lambert, thank you, sorry. Nope, my fault.
Yeah, thank you very much. John Lambert, I live in the Tehermina Historic District, and I have had the pleasure, and I mean it so, of working with Brian on a number of different occasions. It's a delight to work with somebody who evidently is such concern for our valley. I've also been reminded of how important historic preservation is. I'm about one beat back from walking around Machu Picchu. And that's absolutely remarkable sense of preservation and historic significance. The first time I came in contact with Brian was when the Ojai Valley Friends and Foundation was in the process of wanting to rebuild the old Libby Land Office. And it was quite a, quite a long process. But the HPC was very, very helpful. And we did end up finishing the building. It is now used. And the historic preservation of the front of it is very much part of the downtown of Ojai. The second one which I want to mention is the creation of the Tehermina Historic District, which took some time and worked both with the council and especially with the Historic Preservation Commission. They were most helpful over the period of time that this had to be worked through. And the Historic District has become somewhat meaningful. If nothing else, the price of a house there now reflects how desirable it has become. The city, I also would like to just say to the city that some of the problems that have arisen within the Historic District, not the least of which was a property owner on La Paz denuding a whole section of the old original road into the community, now called Arredale Access. The man simply cut down the oaks and everything else so he could have a better view. The city's response on that was fast. They have stayed with it. And it has been most helpful in terms of the replanting of growth and the fact that it is coming back. So that when you enter through the old entrance into the Tehermina Community back from the early, mid-sixties, once again, we will have that beautiful canopy. The Historic Preservation Commission has been most helpful, as has the city. And I just simply came to say thank you to both. That's it.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We almost never get somebody just coming to say thanks. So we're like, wait, what are we supposed to do with that?
Yeah, I would say, but I've got a library board meeting coming up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. Wonderful. Anything online, Mr. Montgomery?
Mayor, we only have one Zoom participant online. So let's tell our Zoom participant now is the time for public comment during our special meeting agenda. And we'll move on, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And let me turn it over to our HPC chair.
Hello, I'm Gina McHatten. I am the Chair of the HPC. We need to keep this moving quickly because there is a very important council meeting following in less than an hour. So I will try to be brief and as sufficient as I can. I understand that we are so far the only commission currently with a joint council meeting. So thank you to everyone who helped get this to happen. So the first item that we want to discuss is our role as a commission with the city of Ojai. We would like to be as useful to the city as we can. We all appreciate the updated Commissioner handbook, but still feel that we need to have a more in-depth discussion to make sure that we are all on the same page with the interpretation of Ojai's current HPC ordinance. We have worked hard on our education to be useful to the city, to develop our expertise, and to assist the city of Ojai in achieving its goals. We want to make sure that we are not running parallel to what the city staff or council wants us to do. Sometimes it just seems that with better communication, we could avoid frustrating ourselves and the city staff. We want a clear direction and council and city feedback of our functions and powers. We don't want to waste our time or yours. We know that it's a discussion that is longer than the short time that we can allot here. So what we are asking is a brief committee or an ad hoc that includes someone from city staff, a council member or two, and two or three members of the HPC to discuss direction. Ultimately, and ideally, a flow chart of how to conduct our business. We don't see this being longer than a couple of meetings, but we feel the outcome will not only benefit the current commission and council, but set up future HPCs for success.
Would you say one more time what you are proposing is the makeup of the committee? Once more.
Well, at least one member of the staff and one or two members of council and two or three members of the HPC. And it would be a short period of time just to really have a clear understanding of our roles and rules.
Any discussion on that? I can't see any objection to that. That sounds like the kind of work that would take more time than we have here right now to do. So I like that idea. Ms. Lang?
I support that idea too. And another thing too that Chair McHatten and I were talking about earlier was having designated joint meetings on the calendar. Annual, like a regular, like the second week in, in March or the, you know, or the second meeting in March or the first meeting in October. But having something that's consistent, that way the HPC, that we, you all have things that are, that you're, that you're working on, that you, that you would present at that meeting or that we would talk about. And that way, if we do have an ad hoc committee or something that you're proposing, like you're proposing, that we, we would be working toward something. And so having goals, measurable goals that would be put into place by the time of those meetings.
Mr. Harvey, yes?
I just wanted to point out to the bodies that we do have an item on an upcoming city council meeting. I believe it's the 22nd. It might be the 8th of April.
April 8th.
Sorry?
April 8th.
Okay. April 8th, we have an item on the agenda to discuss the schedule for joint city council and commission meetings. So that's already in the works. And looking around the table, we'll take that as direction to form the subcommittee that was recommended. So I'll, I'll work with CDD and the city attorney on that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that in 2019, the city wanted to revise its historic preservation ordinance. And we formed a similar committee. Brian Akins and myself and Elise Dupuit represented the HPC and Bill Wyrick and was on as a council member. And the city manager and the community development director came through and offered their input from time to time. And it really worked out very well. I think we came up with a great document. And then it went back to the HPC for approval and the planning commission and the, and eventually the city council and the city attorney. So I think it worked really well then, and I would hope so this time. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. White?
I think as far as the, the goals that were expressed or understanding, I think it's important that we get a report from the city attorney in terms of the, you know, the legal role that HPC is, you know, required. And then what are we allowed to do above and beyond that?
Thank you.
Wonderful. So we'll come up with that. Oh, yes, Mr. Akins.
So somewhat the genesis, genesis for this item and, and the discussion began in having a joint meeting going all the way back to just before the August 27th, 2024 meeting. And in that meeting, or prior to that meeting, the commission had sent to, was in the process of sending the Structures of Merit into the city council for, for their review. I got a copy of that package and saw that, in fact, it said that the direct staff just solicited an RFQ for qualified individuals first, basically for vetting the Historic Preservation Commission's proposals. Prior to that meeting on August 27th, at the last HPC meeting, the consensus of the HPC meeting was that we were looking for getting, getting council members and staff to come and to attend our meeting so they, they could understand what it was that we do as a part of our meeting. And I will say that with, with the last council that we had in place and the current council that we have in place, having been on the commission for 10 years, I'm, I'm very happy with the attendance of the liaisons that are there. Wonderful people. They show up. And if they're not, they let us know. But the, so the question came up and so when I saw this item, I, it was something new to me, new to the HPC. So I ended up getting a few minutes of a very busy city manager to talk about this. And what was introduced and discussed in that was the fact that the city manager had another path going for, going forward. Oops. I still got 54 seconds. Going forward and that involved basically going out, looking for a third party that was going to come in and review all of the information. Actually, they were not only going to review it, they were going to take on the Structures of Merit. And they would be the ones actually making the presentation of the council, not to the, not the HPC that had worked for a year and a half on that. So part of the reason for this meeting was to get guidance from the council. And I'm happy to have the city manager here. He's great in supporting us and working with us. And in fact, he had made the decision, I'll pull it from the council. You talk about it in the next meeting. So just, that's kind of where the impetus came for, in, in getting one of the items on this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems to me that would be part of what we will talk about in that ad hoc committee is what the direction will be. If I'm hearing it, if I'm understanding that correctly, that would be the one thing that that committee would come back to this body with. If I'm understanding. Mr. Harvey, do you have anything to add to that?
If I heard direction correctly, the ad hoc committee is more discussing the, the role of the HPC with the city council, not specifically focusing on Structures of Merit. However, we're happy to take that on if there's head nods around the table that you want both of those topics covered by the subcommittee. That's, okay, I'm seeing kind of a mixed bag here. So maybe you need to discuss that. And I'll step away from that for right.
I think our concern is understanding our, our, once we understand our rules and we have an agreement of how to go forward and are on the same page with the ordinance, I think all of that will solve itself. That's, I think, what we all decided at our, at our meeting.
Mr. Walker?
Right. Because I, I think one of the things that we do fundamentally is, and it's in the general plan of the city, is to identify the city's historic properties. So this gets back to that issue is how do we identify which properties are or are not historic? And the HPC has a role to play in that. So what is that role? And how do we dovetail with other parts of the city in making that happen?
The reason why, and maybe mistakenly, I was conflating possibly some issues is that if we were to say these are things that the council is interested in, working with the HPC in their work on, for example, if it were something like that, that takes a little bit more conversation than I think we would have here. And I was imagining that if we thought of those priorities, they would occur at the ad hoc to then come forward to these bodies. But I, I'm happy to not have that be the direction. But were you going to say something, Ms. Lang? Oh, no. Great. Okay. So, yeah, please.
I have a comment on that topic. I, I think I was liaison for HPC at, at one point in which Structures of Merit were brought forward. And my perception was there was a lot of, you know, confusion and fear amongst the public about what a Structures of Merit designation would mean. And so I think that issue in particular, we need a really good statement of what happens when a, a, a building is designated as a structure of merit so that people don't just kind of assume, speculate and cause, you know, panic about whether your building is going to be taken away from you or some, you know. Yeah.
All right, Talia, go ahead, please.
So I just feel that it is on us if we didn't do proper education and reach out to the, our property owners and to our public. And I think that all goes around to our duties. During COVID, I mean, yes, we were all shut down and everything. But we were working on a, a project. And that project got, we couldn't reach out to the public until we got permission from council to reach out to the public. But the public was already hearing it because our meetings are, are public. It was getting in the newspaper. Things were getting away from us. But we needed your permission to go forward. So I think that all of this, if we just stick, if we don't talk about specific issues and we just talk about a flow chart of how we do our business, I think a lot of those problems will naturally solve themselves. And, and it is our, it on us to make sure that we understand it properly. And sometimes it takes, it takes a public forum to do that. When the first meeting that we talked about, the Structures of Merit, and we had so many people, and the questions that they were asking were answers that we did not know. And we told them, we're going to find this out and not do anything until we understand it better. And I think that, I think that the property owners really appreciated that fact that we weren't just trying to bulldoze it through, that we were trying to say, what you're saying is valid. Let us understand it first. And, but we, I'd like to catch those things before we upset anybody and the, the staff or, you know, council and everyone gets riled up about, about misinformation. If we can just understand our flow through better and what our responsibilities are, I think that will solve a lot of the issues.
I agree 100%. Any more on the first item? Okay, let's go to item number two.
Okay. I'm sure you all know, or hopefully know, that due to the findings during a 2018 Caltrans pedestrian project, the downtown Ojai State Historic District was placed on the California Register of Historic Resources. The HPC did not learn about the state district for several years after it happened. And strangely, it has never been celebrated. It's really an honor and a gift to the city that was given to us with a nice little bow on it. So we thought it was time to educate our community about it with a celebration tying into Ojai Day. Maybe a booth or a display in the museum courtyard with historical photos and information. We would also like to install an official plaque. The cost is about $3,500 installed. It would be an official State of California bear with, you know, the star and most likely installed on a large rock on the entrance to Libby Park.
My question that I asked of you already is, what does that mean? That, that designation, what does that mean to the property owners in the area? Does it mean anything differently than they are already living with?
Well, one thing I want to say is this is not the local district that the commission has been working on. We wanted the council, let the council know that we have, for the time being, shelved the local downtown historic district. This is celebrating something that has already happened. The State of California Downtown Ojai Historic District. It's smaller geographical area and specific time of significance in the Libby era in the downtown. And then simultaneously, the commission plans on, there's, there's a second ad hoc that is working on benefits for property owners who are currently in this district, like working with planning on simplifying the overlays, working with planning in the city to reduce or eliminate fees for contributing properties, making sure that property owners know of any tax benefits and that they can use the California Historic Building Code. Successful preservation is a two-way street. We want to make sure that the stewards of the properties in the district are being supported in any way we can. So when we come to a consensus, we will bring it to the city and council. But if, if Craig wants to explain what it means to property owners better than I can, I'm, you want to take that?
Well, I think you explained it pretty well. But there are some benefits that come with it. If a property is on the state historic district and the work that they want to do on their property is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for historic development, then they can get a CEQA exemption right there. They don't, they, that's just flat out what, what they can get. They can also make use of the State Historic Building Code, which is, allows them to rehabilitate their property according to its historic features rather than having to conform to other local, maybe requirements that aren't there necessarily for the safety of people, but are just part of the local building requirements that might interfere with being able to rehabilitate the building in a historic way. So that can be a big advantage to a lot of the property owners. Also, there's state tax benefits and federal tax benefits that become available to them. They are within the CEQA system, however. So when they do want to, if they did want to demolish the building or if they did want to alter the building, it would go through the CEQA process, which is really just a review. It doesn't say what the property owner can or can't do. It has nothing laid out particularly, and it doesn't impose any requirements on the owner except that their property is able to be reviewed or is reviewed by the planning commission or by the HPC for the impacts that it might have on the historic value of the property before a decision is made. So it's mostly an honor. And it came about kind of fortuitously through this ATP project. Nobody knew about it. And it was Don Thieding that uncovered the document, which is many pages long, that is a wonderful outline of all the properties and evaluates them. And it came up with 28 properties that are contributing. But we all knew that, you know, we all knew our downtown was historic. But this really put it into a, a, a document that we can all look at and, and enjoy. And, and we can really tout as something special for Ojai to have that designation. Most cities and most local organizations have to apply themselves. They have to nominate their historic district. And it's a long, difficult process that costs a lot of money. And you're not guaranteed of getting accepted by the state. But because the ATP grant was funded by federal funds, it went through this consensus prop, prop, process at the state level where it was placed on the California Register. And we got a, the city got a letter confirming that.
So I would suggest with the celebration that there's a, a public relations campaign that spells out what you just said. You know, so, so the owners do understand, here's possible benefits. Here's, if I heard you right, you said they would come under some review, but possibly not even denied necessarily. If I heard you right, they would come to the planning commission, et cetera. But that laid out, I think, would shortcut any concerns.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I just echo what the mayor said. I like all of your proposals. But I think that the city can promote this as, you know, for PR through our website, through our newsletter. I would love it if the commission put together the materials that we asking the...
If, if I may just jump in, I, I think what would probably be great is if the HPC would maybe flesh this out in a recommendation at a near-term meeting. We could then bring it back quickly to the council for approval. And then we would want to build it into the fiscal year 25, 26 budget. We do have a, oh, a public relations firm, if you will. They, they produce our newsletter and our social media. And I would want to avail the outreach effort with them. They're very good at that type of thing. I think that would be, if, if, if the head nods are there, that would probably be how I'd want to do it. And I could work with Maura on that recommendation coming to, from, from the next HPC. HPC, that's okay.
Yes, thank you.
That sounds good. Yes, Mr. Akins?
Okay. So getting back to the, the Ojai Civic Center Historic District, otherwise known as the local historic district, that, as the chair said, we went to the council before we went out contacting anybody because, and I spent nine months contacting all the different individuals that went through. So my question has been, and I've raised this question from January 9th, when this was first introduced to the HPC. I raised it, the question with the mayor. A few weeks ago, I mentioned in the last HPC, I had raised a question to you. So I was wondering if a legal answer to my question about whether the state historic district can be recognized by the HPC without going through the code processes in place in order to recognize the local downtown historic district? And how a state historic district differs or doesn't from a council-approved local district as regards to local matters? I have a copy of this document if you want it, Matt. I don't know if you have it. So I, the mayor sent me to it last night. He had gotten the information. I will qualify it. It was questions that were put from AI source. It's also, again, from that, needs further clarification and definition. I did wind up, following from searching, the city cannot directly reject a historic district designation by the state of California. However, there are some important points to consider. For a historic district to be formally listed in the California Register, it cannot be done over the objection of a majority of property owners. If a majority of property owners document their opposition, the nomination would be submitted as a determination of eligibility rather than a formal listing. If, even if a district is determined eligible but not formally listed due to property owner objection, it would still be treated the same as listed districts for state-level projects, reviews, environmental review, and CEQA Quality Act, which was also discussed. The process for designating California historical landmarks, which are automatically listed in the California Register of Historic Resources, requires the approval of the property owners. This suggests that local consent is generally sought in the state designation process. While cities may have their own processes for local historic district designation, these are separate from state-level designations. Do not override the state determinations. It is important to note that while a city cannot unilaterally reject a state historic district, the state processes does take in account local input, particularly from property owners. So again, I asked that question because I wanted to, and, and as the mayor knows, the question was initially going to go to, asked of Matt, was whether we can basically do this without going to the property owners or even without going to the council. I like your suggestion, City Manager Harvey. Thank you.
Mr. Summers, please.
Can I, can I just speak one second?
Of course.
I would like to say that we have gone over this many times. And we have taken a lot of education classes based on state historic districts that have explained this process over and over again. And I, I think more than making our mayor have to go AI on us to try and find information when we do have the education behind us. I'm really sorry about that, but...
No, it's okay.
So, thank you.
A couple of comments. One, I'll always caution folks using AI.
Of course.
AI is a powerful tool, but it is as smart as the internet. AI at heart is amalgamating what is all on the internet. And we all know the internet is both incredibly smart and incredibly not smart. So please always double-check whatever you pull off AI because it's just pulling from whatever's on the internet without any direct vetting. So that's the comment on anything you do in AI. And we've seen this in lawsuits in Texas where a law firm, not my firm, a firm in Texas, filed a brief citing a case that doesn't exist. And the judge read the riot act to them. So always be cautious with AI. It's a powerful tool, but it must be verified. Now, on this question, the state historic district is designated by... The state historic district is designated by the state, has never been fought by the city. We would need majority council direction to do that, we have never had majority council direction to do that. What that means is Commissioner Akins noted, I'm sorry, Commissioner Walker noted, is that The state historic district designation, it means that it exists for sequel purposes. So if we have a discretionary permit for any of those twenty eight property owners, discretionary is not every city permit. It's a permit that requires discretionary view and approval, most commonly a designer view permit. Then we must analyze it through the sequel process, which requires assessing for applicable exemptions, Which include if the project they're doing, the modifications, are consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards Or Historic Preservation, then there's an exemption. If they're not, say it's a complete demolition and replacement with an entirely new building. That's not consistent with historic preservation, that's not going to be exempt from CEQA, we're going to have to do an EIR, do a full scope review. Outcome will be determined based on the process. And that's going to be typically your planning commission and then anything under our code That requires a historic resource report, which would be a CEQA subject decision, is going to be referred to the HPC for review and comment, Then back to planning commission, potentially up to council. All of that's happening under our existing codes in CEQA, under the state designated historic district designation for those twenty eight properties. It also has the benefits it taps into the grants and some state tax exemptions and federal tax exemptions and grants, as noted, and the historic building code. If we were, if the council were to designate a local historic district on top, which could be the same twenty eight properties Or a different map has been discussed at various times. That designation would maintain all of those existing requirements and benefits and add the ability for the Mills Act. The Mills Act allows qualifying historic properties, which means landmarks, locally designated landmarks or Contributing properties to locally designated historic districts to benefit from certain property tax reductions in return for A contract requiring certain aspects of historic preservation. That's what's controlled at heart by a local district. So with no local district in place, as ordered by the council, there's no Mills Act benefits because only the council can give away its own property tax. Only the council can give away, or in this case, exchange money for preservation Under a Mills Mills Act designation. So if we don't have, now, we do not have a locally designated historic district in the downtown area, we do in Taramina. We do not in the downtown, therefore, there is no Mills Act benefits in the downtown area. But the district does exist for state sequel purposes and for other state purposes. And last, no local historic district can be designated only by the HPC. It must be done by the council, under our code and state law. Happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Summers.
No, sorry.
Nope, no, that, no, 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 that's just a preference. Any other comments?
Mayor, could I do a point of clarification real quick?
Yes.
Okay, so as the mayor knows, the reason I came to you Is the fact that commissioners cannot go to legal counsel. They have to go through city staff or in this case, the council and so and this is a relationship That I've talked with the mayor for quite some time, I appreciate him. As I said originally, it was that he asked him to go to our City Attorney rather than go to AI. Didn't have, didn't have a chance to go through and prove that, but An application for the state for historic districts lists Many of the items that were covered in that information provided by the mayor.
Craig, do you have anything you want to add? Okay.
I, I guess I have a comment. I And I think when a commission is, you know, presented with something that requires legal analysis, It's always been my understanding that that goes to the city manager for an assessment of You know, how how do we get from the point of the request to the point of The attorney Putting together the memo? And so I don't know if that's something that we need to, you know, kind of work on, smooth out the details and I guess my other Question would be is that I had a kind of a general understanding That it would be the chair who would request Legal analysis based upon feedback from the commission as opposed to an individual commissioner.
I'm happy to take full responsibility and say I misinterpreted it as a casual request, but I will not do that going forward. And I wasn't trying to offer legal advice from AI.
And I would also like to add that I'm comfortable going to our liaison First before and then our liaison would then decide if it needs to be up to the, going up to the chain of commands to to our city manager.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing on this issue, correct me if I'm wrong, is we, it would be part of next year's budget, there'll be a proposal coming from the HPC To the council on a PR campaign that would include also the plaque in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Yes, okay.
Is the plaque, would it be for this year's Ojai Day or for the following year?
This year's Ojai Day is in the budget.
Oh, okay.
Because our budget is June, July. And I could loan the city a few bucks in the meantime, if necessary, just kidding, I don't know.
But so we could do it for this Ojai Day?
I'll let Mr. Harvey answer that.
Yes, I think just if we get this on the next HPC meeting and it then gets to the council, then we can certainly Put it into the budget and if the council approves it, I don't see why we could not, because that's not till October for Ojai Day. And we can work with Christie, Ms. Rivera, excuse me, to make that all part of the celebration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay, okay, number three.
All right, and So the the city council commissioned a historic resources survey in two thousand nine and revised in twenty eleven. The survey listed possible historic resources in the city limits. Basically, the property was either listed as a one for potentially historic, two for not historic, or three unclear, like it could have been obstructed View from the road. This was done as a windshield survey. The state of California strongly suggests an update to the survey every five years. It was last completed fourteen years ago and we are now out of compliance. When the city of Ojai was discussing the windfall budget, Leslie Rule, who was our liaison at the time, Explained our request to council for funds to do an update. It was an eight thousand dollar request to do a rather simple update to our current survey to get us back to the basic compliance. A few months later, the city manager, when discussing a different item, Suggested in the staff report that we do a more comprehensive survey from an outside company. After much research and after conversations with the city manager and the commission, It is agreed that that would be the best way forward. There hasn't been an investment in the HPC since before covid. Previously, we would ask for a budget that would cover two to three historic resource reports on potential historic properties. I know budgets don't roll over, but if you think of it in that respect, it's been a long time since the HPC has asked for any money Except for this update and the small amount of money to keep us up on our education. We would like whatever company does this update to start as soon as possible. That Craig Walker is available for any questions and when it's done, it's presented to council for adoption. Having an inventory survey is of great value to the city, to the residents, as well as to local businesses. Properties on this list are not landmarked or really protected. And out of the city of Ojai, it will only result in a limited number of properties That are truly historic or have historic value to the people of Ojai. And that doesn't mean it still can't be demolished or altered. It's knowledge and knowledge is power. It's more of a just hold up, let's make sure the property owner in the city knows why this property is listed as a one. What the city and council does with that information is up to the city and to the council. So we are asking this evening that the council accepts the city manager's suggestion to do a proper survey.
No objections here. Mr. Whitman?
I, I'm totally supportive.
Ms. Ming?
I am, I am too, I think, I think that it's, it's, it's nice to have an initiative that was started that we can build upon And I think it's going to do a lot of good for the community. Just in, like you said, having the awareness, knowledge is power, I I agree with that and also, you know, one other Other point that you had mentioned in our conversation that I thought was 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 a positive for this Was that, you know, if if a home, if someone's buying a home and they don't have any awareness that it's That it has historic relevance, then they might not be like, there's like a level of of appreciation when you know When you know that something is rooted in in history, so I I think it's, I'm very much in support of this.
And and it works in the other way too, if you have somebody who clearly wants to do something to their property, maybe that Realtor who would have access to this document because it would be online, would only show them twos, wouldn't show them ones and then in reverse, if they Really wanted to be in a historic property, then they could, the Realtor can then look and see, you know, so it It is a valuable tool for a lot of different reasons.
And if I can make one more point, because I think that there there was to to the point that we were, that we made earlier, that what someone made earlier, There has been a lot of miscommunication about what you all have tried to do. And 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 I just wanted to to validate That what I understand about this is that we're not talking about restricting anyone's freedom Or taking any any homeowner's rights to do anything to their home away, we're basically giving them an option, giving them a choice, giving them It's about information and choice.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, I just would respectfully request that we consider maybe doing a reset on this item and having it come, you know, start at the HPC Because there are a number of ways that you can can do this and I'm recommending an RFQ Process, but but that's going to take some discussion first at the HPC So that we can get this recommendation as to what, you know, what is it we're looking to do? You know, in this process and and what, because you could end up with something that's just purely advisory as is being discussed Or you could end up with different levels of restriction. Before I was here, I was in the city of Pacific Grove and we had We went through a very similar exercise and it, I think it's still ongoing because the inventory was very large there. And I would see the HPC having a very integral role In in the review from the subject matter expert when they return, but this is a bigger discussion and so I would Kind of want to do a reset here, go back to the HPC, see if, you know, how this should look and then if there's agreement, The recommendation would then come to the city council. Ultimately, we would need to build funds into next year's budget. We were going to do this exercise, it is more than an eight thousand dollar Effort, it's it's probably more to the tune of, you know, fifty thousand dollars if you're going to be doing it properly with the amount of Education and outreach and research that's required. So I just wanted to jump in and say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, yes, and then go.
Well, I just wanted to say I I often go on other cities' websites and look up their historic preservation Ordinance and how their program works. And I found that so many of them, including Pacific Grove and and just almost every other city in the state or county, The foundation for their historic preservation program is their survey. And they have a comprehensive survey. First of all, it eliminates like eighty or ninety percent of your buildings So that when the planners get an application, they don't have to think, is this a historic building? They can go and see that it's not, it's a two and it's not an issue anymore. If you don't have a good survey, then you get one of these situations where you Decide maybe it isn't a historic building and then everybody starts, the neighbors and people start speaking up and you've got A controversy, so it can really help to put some order to your whole System of of deciding which properties are and are not historic.
Thank you. Over here, someone's hand up? No? Okay, yes.
And another thing, it also takes out the HPC in a way that It is done by an outside organization, so it it's less a political document when it comes from an outside agency, even though we would Be involved in participating and helping with it in whatever way they allowed us to, but Having it come from somewhere else and from a respected company is always going to Protect the city and us in a in a much better way.
That's worth a lot. So am I hearing from you what Mr. Harvey was proposing, which is the HPC will Come up with some ideas about the scope, make the proposal, then to the council? That's amenable to you? Okay. Any more discussion about that? Think we have a plan? And we have fifteen minutes? Good job, yeah, all right. Anything else before we adjourn this special session? Yes, Mr.?
I just, I just wanted to make a quick comment and thank the Historic Preservation Commission. I all, you know, often promote that we're the last small town In Southern California and I believe that our historic preservation efforts That have taken place are really important. They drive our tourist economy, that's our lifeblood. People come here because it's a unique place and I really appreciate what you guys have done.
I want to echo that, that we have a downtown that is recognizable, you know when you're there and not every town has that And it's a real blessing and it takes a lot of work and I loved growing up here for that.
For generations.
For generations.
Yeah, I mean, people who are in that downtown arcade, it it could be a hundred years from now and you just have to look at the cars, you know, you have to
Yeah, right. Correct. Okay, all right, special meeting adjourned, thank you so much. Good job, pal.